Duly scheduled, called and convened Greer City Council meeting having duly assembled. And I called the meeting to order, I'd like to invite you to stand with us if you would like to participate in the pledge of allegiance and an invocation for council.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most kind and gracious heavenly father, we come before you this evening asking your blessing upon this council. We ask that you bless us as we go about the business of this city. We thank you for the calling that you've placed upon our lives to be here and to serve in such a way as to lift this city up. We thank you for our employees and ask that you watch over them as they go about their duties and be with us as we make decisions this evening. We ask that we be mindful of all of those in our community and the needs that surround us and give us guidance and direction through the rest of this meeting. In Christ's name we pray, amen. Not sure. Let's move, council, let's move to public forum. This evening in public forum, we have got two people that have asked to speak this evening. Public forum is a time that we set aside at the beginning of the meeting to entertain petition, not petitions necessarily, that would be a petitioner, but gather information from those that would like to address council in a fashion that typically is in the comment form. We don't answer questions in regards to what you come about in the session this evening. We only got two this evening. I would only ask that you be brief and to the point, but we're not impose any kind of time limit this evening with just two people that would wish to speak. And with that, oh, as you come to the podium this evening, if you'll state your name and address as a matter of record, it will be on the record and of course available to the public through our media and coverage of this, of this meeting. So this evening Sarah Petroski is going to be our first speaker and so the floor is yours.
I'm Sarah Petroski, I guess in the right place, 3 Drexel Avenue, and I represent a full symphonic orchestra called Foothills Philharmonic, and we're happy to be based here in Greer. Though as a low overhead nonprofit organization, we don't have a lot of money to spend on marketing, and some of you may not be familiar with us, we give what we call classically casual concerts. And we have a series that enables us to weave into the cultural fabric of Greer. We give concerts approximately once, one concert a month. And there are a variety of concerts from a full symphony to pops concerts, musicals, show tunes, movies, and we even have a special family concert where we introduce children of all ages to classical music. Our concerts are all free, fun, and family friendly. We really want to thank you for the grant that the ATAX, Greer ATAX gave to us last year to try to uncover this hidden gem that's in your community through marketing. We were able to hire a short-term marketing consultant to get a start on a plan. We had a video interviewer and someone, actually a television broadcaster that compiled some interviews, we'd like to turn them into short videos that we can explain to the public what we do. And so we have eight large concerts and seven small ones. No, we have five small ones, actually depending how you count it. There's thirteen in all. We are actually especially proud to have concerts at the Driggers City of Greer Cultural Arts Center where we give small group performances and we can partner with, people can come and see the art center there before the concerts afterwards, and it seems like a good match. We hope that you will continue to fund us so we can enlarge our marketing to prevent, to present this, to be part of the city of Greer. Greer, we like Greer as a home. We have both players, an audience that come from Spartanburg or Clemson North. And I would close by saying, we have a concert next Saturday night with a pops concert, May 3rd. It starts at seven o'clock, I'd like to invite you all to come and find out more about us. If you have some children, there are, is a petting zoo at six o'clock before the concert. That means children of all ages can try out orchestra instruments and play them. It's a bit of chaos in the lobby before the concert starts, but it's a lot of fun as all of our concerts are free, fun, and family friendly. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is no stranger to us. Katie Collins with the Greer Chamber of Commerce is with us this evening. Katie, welcome, and the floor is yours ma'am.
Well, thank you, council, for having me this evening. My name is Katie Collins. I'm honored to serve as the president and CEO of the Greer Chamber of Commerce at 111 Trade Street, right in downtown Greer. And in light of the discussion on the accommodations tax this evening, I just wanted to give a little bit of an overview about what that funding has meant to this community, but us as an organization as well. So last year, as you may recall, the Arts and Eats Festival was actually impacted by Hurricane Helene. We ended up having to move it to the end of the month. Despite that, we still welcome 10,000 to 15,000 visitors to downtown Greer, providing economic impact to our downtown businesses at a time where they probably needed it most. We were thrilled to have representation from all across the state, but as well as looking into North Carolina as attendees that evening, or for that day. Building on that success and hopefully without the impact of a hurricane this year, fingers crossed, we are really excited going into our fifth year to cue, you know, look at how events like this impact a community for both residents and visitors. It creates a sense of place and belonging. We understand that this is for those that live here, but we're also recruiting in from outside of the community. As an anecdote, I will say that for the vendor applications this year, we have received vendors from as far away as Charleston. So when we're thinking in the spirit of ATAX, not only are we looking to bring visitors into the area, but we're also looking to bring those vendors in as well to help support our local hospitality industry. We are also something, I did want to make sure that we pointed out, last year we were planning to do an economic impact study with USC Upstate. Due to the hurricane, we decided that was probably not the best year to do it, so we are looking to do that again this year. And that's really to give some hard numbers for us, both locally what that looks like, but as we consider ATAX, what that looks like in bringing outside funds into the area as well. The main thing I wanted to say is this funding is critical to us as an organization to be able to put on the event, but also to the success of the event. We view this as something for the community, I mean truly. It is something that we want to make sure that we are showcasing the great things happening in Greer and providing an opportunity for both residents and outsiders to experience the wonderful things right on Trade Street. I also just want to say from a chamber perspective, we recognize all that the city does for us as an organization. It does not go unnoticed nor unappreciated, and we just want to thank you for your previous funding and for your consideration for continued funding this year. Thank you.
All good, all applicants are good applicants and those monies are doled out, we'll hear a little bit more about that and what it, what the parameters are for acquiring some of that money and hopefully lend some more insight and understanding to that. But it is always a difficult task for our staff to determine where and how much that money gets to go around, and we would love to have more of it, to do more of it, and over time we will. But I can assure you that there's much thought, both at a staff level and a council level about how that, how that money gets delved out, and we will have that discussion here in just a little while. With that then, council, let's move to the minutes of the council meeting held April the 8th, 2025. I'll entertain a motion that it be received.
So maybe a second.
A motion and a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, let's do some employee recognitions this evening. I'll ask Mr. Merriman to join me in the front as we celebrate with some of our employees this evening.
As always, we'd like to recognize our employees, particularly as they reach milestones in their employment with the city, as long as they're ever from others and of the fact that this government, we don't have quite as many that are celebrating in person, but we enjoy taking time to recognize those folks who have trusted us as their employer and should. So appreciation for that, and this is a resolution recognizing and commending the city of Greer employees. That whereas the city of Greer never should recognize and reward its dedicated and faithful employees, and whereas Chase Thompson has served in the fire department for five years, Michelle Drummond has served in the engineering department for five years, Tracy Fisher has served in the finance department for five years, and Steve Brink has served in the engineering department for 10 years, and whereas these employees have served in a distinguished and professional manner now, being therefore resolved that the city council of the city of Greer, South Carolina, and being duly assembled, wishes to efficiently recognize and commend these employees for their distinguished and dedicated service which they have performed. And being further resolved that the city of Greer hereby rewards these dedicated employees with a certificate of appreciation and administrative headoff with the date, with the date approved this 22nd day of April, 2025. I'd like to call you up and make a presentation to you briefly, and so Chase Thompson, Chase, what this is doing. Yes, please.
Always a smile.
Please take a round of applause.
Mr. Mayor, before those folks step out, if you don't mind, I, not only do we get a chance to recognize our employees, but while we have so few, I do want to take a little bit of a liberty, if you don't mind, and recognize four other people in this room that have served the city with distinction, and that would be four of our council members who have reached milestones in this amount of time. So I want to celebrate our employees, but I also want to take an opportunity to celebrate y'all as well. Mrs. Albert, serving 15 years in January, Mr. Hopper, five, and Mr. Mayor and Mr. Bettis, both 25 years as of January. So while we get an opportunity to thank our employees for their years of service, y'all have thankless jobs, and I want to take an opportunity to thank you for your time and what you do for this city. So from me and from staff to you, thank you so much for everything y'all do.
Mayor, when next time his evaluation comes up.
Appreciate it. Time flies when you're having fun, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Twenty-five years.
Never a dull meeting.
Well, you got me so overwhelmed, I lost my place. Oh, we've got some, some more recognitions this evening.
Shouldn't have stayed up there.
And another, we've got some folks that are going to join us for this one, so if you're part of the group that's here for child abuse prevention month, you'll join me in front, I think.
There's my friend.
We thank you for joining us this evening, and this is, this is something that we, we as a community, part of it up and proactive against this child abuse prevention. And I wish that beyond simply a proclamation that we could wait a while and address this issue in some form or fashion, that we're appreciative of the efforts of organizations and those that represent our community in providing safety to children in our community. So this proclamation reads, whereas the city of Greer recognizes the inherent dignity in the right for the child to grow up safe and never treated by frequent fear of pain and abuse or neglect, and whereas it is a powerful legislative responsibility as a community to protect the safety and well-being of all children and support families in creating loving and supportive environments. And whereas Greer believes in partnership with the South Carolina Children's Trust as demonstrated an unwavering commitment to the prevention of child abuse through their impactful programs and initiatives. Whereas Greer believes dedication to providing essential services and resources to families indeed, not only strengthen our community, but also help mitigate the risk factors associated with child abuse and neglect. Now therefore, Mayor Rick Danner and the Greer City Council proclaim the month of April, 2025, as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Greer. Let's give these folks a round of applause.
for our international festival. This is a festival that we started a number of years ago, and it has literally taken roots and grown in this community. It is a wonderful opportunity, if you haven't had a chance, to visit here in part during our international festival. It is quite easily one of, one of my favorite events that we have down here, and this is a, this is a chance to get just a small sense of how diverse this community is. We will have probably 25, maybe 30 nations represented this year, and you will be able to take advantage of seeing their booths and learning more about their cultures, but you'll also have a chance to learn about their foods, which is one of my favorite things. And so this is, this is a good opportunity for us to come together as, as not only a community, but as an international community, important that we realize that and understand it's, there are more benefits to it than I think we realized on the face of that, and I think that life is our, is our international community. There's been a lot of talk in the news about international businesses lately, and so one of the things that we wanted to do in combination with our international festival was to declare the impact of international businesses on the city of Greer. It, it appeared to me that there is a, there is an intersection not far from here, certainly inside of the city of Greer, where there is a Korean company on one corner, an Israeli company that manufactures food packaging processes across the street, there is a business from the United Kingdom on the other side of the intersection, and a Japanese business across the street from them. Just small smattering of international businesses that we see here, in addition to the ones that we know so intrinsically, the, the official owner is Abishy and the others. And so one of the things that I think we may underestimate, undervalue sometimes are those international businesses, because just like the people that represent all the different countries here in, in Greer, those businesses bring the same kind of flavor to our business community. Oftentimes they are smaller companies and for some reason get overlooked, and we felt like it was appropriate to recognize international business, businesses in the city of Greer. So this proclamation reads as such, whereas companies from around the world have planted roots in the fertile ground of the city of Greer as a result of the city's pro-business climate, logistical assets in hometown field, and whereas dozens of businesses from the continents of Africa, Asia, Europe, and North America have chosen to set up shop in Greer and have attracted top talent to our community, and whereas international companies have invested hundreds of millions of dollars in facilities in Greer and have provided thousands of jobs in advanced manufacturing, engineering automation, advanced materials, banking, warehouse distribution, and more. And whereas international companies have built a culture of innovation and entrepreneurship in the city of Greer, whereas the people from around the world have chosen to make Greer their own, raising families, empowering their talent and energy in their own community. Whereas the city of Greer celebrates a vibrant mix of cultures every spring during the Greer Goes Global International Festival. Now therefore, our Rick Danner, Mayor of the city of Greer, do hereby proclaim that international business makes Greer a better place to work, live, and this, and we celebrate the decision so many businesses and their employees have made to grow and prosper in the city of Greer. I will make this proclamation as well at the festival this weekend and encourage those businesses to make contact with our development department, and we will proceed from there. In addition to recognizing these international businesses, we shout out as well to the inland board, because they have brought a whole new dynamic to what takes place in this area and from a logistical standpoint, having the ability to have goods brought from all over the world, Charleston, and be transported into the city of Greer days in those cases, and then shipped on to, to almost the entirety of the eastern United States, brings us in touch with more international companies than we probably realize are an important part of who we are, and I will make this proclamation again, and celebrate that as well during the international festival.
That information is available as always. You can contact the administrator or department heads for additional information or questions if you have them. Chris Klein joins us now for an overview of our financial report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The financial performance summary as of March 2025, starting in the general fund, we had a cash balance of $28,283,570. Year-to-date revenues of $42,369,000. Year-to-date expenditures of $33,613,000, and we are under budget by 8% for the year. We have a favorable revenue benchmark variance of $6,700,000, a favorable expenditure benchmark variance of $2,920,000, with an overall favorable, overall benchmark variance of $9,626,000. Moving on to hospitality fund, we had a cash balance of $810,000, year-to-date revenue of $2,889,000, year-to-date expenditures of $3,066,000. And finally, stormwater fund, we had a cash balance of $3,859,000, year-to-date revenues of $2,377,000, year-to-date expenditures of $1,613,000. And with that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, sir. Council floor is open for discussion or questions. Hearing none, we appreciate your report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Merriman, your report please, sir.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you very much. I want to congratulate our fire department as being recognized by the school district of Greenville County as the Bonds Career Center Community Partner, Business Partner of the Year. We actually have four former co-op students from the Bonds Career Center are now full-time firefighters with the city of Greer, which demonstrates a continued investment not only in our partners, our government partners across disciplines, but our investment in the youth in this community. So we, we're definitely growing our own, so congratulations to our folks at the fire department. As you mentioned in your resolution or your proclamation, Mr. Mayor, we do have, the international festival is Saturday, the 26th, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. It is always a good time, so please make sure to come out and participate in the international festival. By way of reminder, the parking lot at 155 Depot Street, so if, for those of you that are without, that don't understand the address so much, is the location, it's the old Greer Relief Parking Lot. But that, that parking lot will be closed on Thursday, the 24th, and Thursday, the 1st, but I want to remind everybody there is free parking at the Jason Street Garage. We also encourage everybody to come out and celebrate the City of Greer Night at the Greenville Drive, which is May the 1st. This is a, an employee picnic event, but it's also a night where we partner with the chamber to celebrate all things that are Greer and to, to really just display that to the larger Greenville-Spartanburg community. The Greer Middle School Choir will sing the national anthem, we're going to have a city employee throwing out the first pitch, and our own celebrity Shefford is going to make an appearance, so please make that a night that you set aside to come out. The basketball courts, over at Stevens Field, we had moved the basketball courts from the Victor Gym site over to that grass lot out from the Victor Gym site over to, um, that, uh, grass lot out on to, um, out adjacent to Stevens Field. Uh, the asphalt has been poured. It'll take four to five weeks for the material to be ready, but we expect those, those courts to be ready for service and, uh, some basketball play, uh, in mid-June. I also want to remind Council of our workshop on a week from today, next Tuesday, beginning at 2:30. Uh, there will be no posted agenda, but it will be a workshop to discuss, um, some of the, uh, growth-related issues and other things that we'll be talking about, uh, that as we move into, uh, the end of this budget year. Uh, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Council, we have, um, one item of, uh, business this evening, um, that's new business, and that is in regards to the 2025 accommodations tax grant recommendations. Um, on behalf of the Accommodations Tax Committee, we respectfully forward the enclosed recommendations for the use of the A-Tax funds from fiscal year ending June 30th, 24, to, uh, the Greer City Council that comes on behalf of Mr. Klein, who is our finance director. Uh, I think it would be appropriate, uh, Mr. Klein, if you would, um, give us an overview of the accommodations tax recommendations in terms of, um, the, uh, the guardrails that you and your committee work with, and, um, also identify your committee that has, uh, that has helped you on this, um, on this journey. And, uh, then, um, I'm sure Council will take those under consideration and for debate. So the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So happy to present to you the accommodations tax grant recommendations for 2025. So, starting in the hospitality industry, our, our committee members are Bill Tyler, Karen Hall, Heidi Henry, Hyten Patel, from our cultural organization, Katie Joner, and from the general public, Sergio Diaz Rosado, and Candace Good. And we'll, we'll also go over in this presentation the kind of things that the committee looks for when making their decision, but just to give you an idea, so the committee met on, uh, Tuesday, February 25th, 2025, at 5:30 at City Hall. They reviewed a total of seventeen applicants, ten applications for programming, and seven for advertising. So the committee focuses on five different criteria whenever they're making their recommendation. So economic impact to cities' hospitality and accommodation industries, the attendance of out-of-town guests, culturally enriched events, sales and marketing plans to target out-of-town guests, and promoting and marketing the culture and life of the city of Greer. So the final recommendation for the accommodations tax grant applicants, for the programming grants, there was a total of $156,741.33 available to grant. Of that amount, the recommenda, recommended amount to grant would be $131,242.50. The advertising grants, there is a amount of $70,987.21 available to grant, and the committee is recommending to grant that entire amount. In the next two slides, we'll actually go over in detail the applicants, what they requested and what was recommended. So starting in the tax programming grant, South Carolina Charities, Inc., for the Greer Street Fest Shop Local Week, committee is recommending to award $20,000. Greer Parks Recreation and Tourism for the Xmas VII's Rugby Tournament, the committee is recommending $8,000. For Greer Relief and Resources Agency, the Greer Xmas Parade, the committee has chosen to not recommend an amount.
The Greer what parade?
Greer Christmas Parade.
Please say Christmas.
Yes, sir. The Greer Chamber of Commerce Greer Arts and Eats Festival, the committee is recommending Foothills Philharmonic Classically Casual Concert Season, the committee has chosen to not recommend, to fund, an amount. For the Greer Farmers Market, the committee is recommending $9,465. The Greer Heritage Museum for History Museum Gallery Expansion, the committee is recommending For Greer Parks Recreation and Tourism, Dia de los Muertos, it's very fun to say, the, the committee is recommending $10,650. Greer Parks Recreation and Tourism Freedom Blast, the committee is recommending $18,757.50. And for the Greer Parks Recreation and Tourism International Fest, the committee is recommending Moving to the advertising, Greer Chamber of Commerce Greer Arts and Eats Festival, the committee is recommending $49,637.21. SC Charities, Inc., the BMW Pro-Am, the committee has chose to not recommend an amount for funding. Greer Parks Recreation and Tourism Discover Advertisement Vacation Guide, the committee is recommending $11,000. Greer Parks Recreation and Tourism, the Discover Print Visitor Guide, the committee is recommending Greer Cultural Arts Council Advertisement of Season Play, the committee is recommending Greer Parks Recreation and Tourism Advertisement for the International Festival, committee is recommending $2,550. And finally, Greer Parks Recreation and Tourism Advertisement for the 2026 Freedom Blast, the committee is recommending $2,550. That concludes the recommendations that this committee has for you all, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
For the purpose of discussion and questions at this point, uh, this comes with a recommendation from the committee. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So a motion, second.
Motion in a second. So the floor is open for discussion at this point.
Mr. Klein, can you say again how much the, uh, the programming grants recommended totals versus how much is available to grant?
Yes, sir. So the total amount available is $156,741, and it's recommended $131,242.50.
And that's the programming grants?
Correct, yes. That'd be the programming.
Um, did some quick math, uh, and the, the two, I believe I'm correct, the two largest recipients is the Chamber, $50,000, and it looks like they got a third of that, those dollars from the programming grants, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And then the city, approximately $32,000. I know that last year we had this, um, I think the sun, one of the same questions I'm about to ask was, was, was brought up then, is the, the, uh, Christmas parade, they asked $4,000, and they got zero. And what, what was the thinking behind that?
So the, the reasoning behind that is they're, they're looking to see who from out-of-town the tourists are coming in, and they, the committee felt there wasn't enough justification that anybody, tourists from out-of-town are coming to participate and be involved in the event, more so locals of the community.
The leader of the Chamber just said they were going to do a study about, uh, how many people were brought in, but they couldn't do it, but that's justification to give them $50,000?
Based, based off the total attendance from the, the Chamber, uh, they're, they're expected to have, you know, 11,000 in attendance, 2,000 of which are tourists, some, they kind of, the calculation done.
For the parade, did, did that, were numbers not submitted?
For the parade, there was a expected total of attendance of about 6,000 that, that they filled out on their application. Uh, there was not an amount given as far as, so it asks you to list, uh, total expected in attendance and then estimate on total tourists. So there wasn't an amount listed for the tourists, just total expected of 6,000.
And the, the, um, Foothills Philharmonic, what's, what was the reasoning to give them zero?
It was, it was the same reasoning. So they, the committee felt that there wasn't enough evidence to justify that tourists are coming from outside the city to attend these events, out of, outside that 50-mile radius.
How do they gather such data?
So every, that's also part of the application process, so every, every, all the applicants sort of list a different reasoning, be it, uh, surveys, um, geo-tracking, um, footage, drone footage, uh, they'll, they'll, they'll ask it in the event, um, zip codes, certain things. So every one of them will kind of list and say how they're gathering this information, which also goes into the decision in which they felt they're justifying and backing up how they're gathering that data. So it, it kind of just depends on which, which applicant.
The, the farmer's market's getting almost 10,000. Why? I, I, to me, the farmer's market is, it's a market. Um, is, is that, is, does that help, because, correct me if I'm wrong, the farmer's market is not a city function, it's not something that we put on, we provide the space, correct?
That's correct.
So I'm assuming the, the person or organization that runs the farmer's market, um, they don't do it out of their own good, you know, so they're getting paid, right?
Correct.
And so what is that, that, the $9,000 to pay them to be here?
No, the farmer's market too is, it's, it's a, it's an interesting one because it's not one event, it's going throughout, you know, the entire season in which, um, they, they may draw on a crowd from 700 people to 2,000 people, um, in which they're saying they expect to receive about 28% of tourists of that amount.
From over 50 miles?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I can't buy that. That's, farmer's markets don't draw folks from 50 miles.
I would say...
I would say no, I can, that if...
Have you been to one?
I've been to a lot of markets.
To these, I'm telling you.
Sure, I would, well, I sit here and watch them on Tuesday nights when they're out there.
There are vendors from outside 50 miles, every single one.
That's vendors, that's somebody going to make money. I'll drive 50 miles to go make money, but I'm not going to drive 50 miles to go buy something that somebody made or grew.
I, I bet Maggie Blair would be happy to provide you those exact numbers where they're getting that 28%. I, I guarantee they didn't pull that out of the air, that 28%.
And so part of the, on that application specifically, they draw that data from their vendors from the sales to kind of find out who's coming from where.
Yeah, I've got one more question.
Yes, sir.
Um, and, and this is more about operations of the Chamber. Is, the Chamber is a organization to, it's a nonprofit, correct?
Correct.
And it is there to support their members and develop their business, and members pay dues.
Yes, sir.
So if this Chamber event is to support their businesses, um, why aren't the Chamber members paying the 50,000?
Well, actually, aren't they getting a dip out of each column?
Yes, sir, they are.
They're getting almost 100,000.
They are getting 50,000 from each. It's recommended.
I would, I would offer that the Chamber's mission is not just for their paying dues-paying members, I would argue that the Chamber's mission, as it's actually stated, is to promote the economic prosperity of the Greer community in general, um, as well as its members. And certainly, there is skin in the game that members have, but I think we all know that, you know, the downtown footprint, I'd say a very small minority of the business, of the businesses who benefit from this event and from the Chamber's work in general, um, are dues-paying members that way. Including, I mean, we, we as a, as a city benefit from this event and from the services rendered by the Chamber as well.
Well, I, I, I don't doubt that, but I could also say that you make the same argument for the parade, for the Foothills Philharmonic, e- everything on there that the city benefits from, but, um, well, I'll, I'll just be honest, the, the Arts and Eats is just a copy-and-paste festival that came from something like this Greenville. Um, they took away the Family Fest, there's been a lot of folks that have still have heartburn over that. Um, and it, it was said about the festival, it represents, uh, I think, Greer, but I, I don't know that it does. I mean, i- it, it may represent a, a portion, but, uh, I'm, I'm just, I'm just not sure. I, I do not believe it's worth 50,000.
If I could, if I could offer, as far as that goes, we've actually had, I, I know of a lot of vendors who have actually been pushed out of events like Artisphere, the bigger events like that, and, you know, they're coming to an event like this, these are the smaller artisan vendors rather than, we're not looking for the big splash names necessarily. These are, these are vendors who are not at those events, actually. Um, I think there's some pretty key differences for those who have attended both events, is actually a very unique event, you know, within the upstate itself. And certainly, you know, you go to a lot of events, there's going to be music, there's going to be food, there's going to be crafts, you know, artisans, vendors, et cetera, but, um, having been at the event each year and having attended some of those other events, I think this definitely has its, has developed in its short history, its own unique character, um, you know, as I think it's important to us as a community and to us as a council, I know we agree, we want to be us for sure and not copy, like you say, we don't want to copy and paste anybody for sure, and I agree with that.
And, and if you use that thought process, the Greer Christmas Parade is, that is Greer.
For the record, I'm in favor, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I'm in favor of that as well.
So Council, let's, let's, let's focus right now on, it, it, let's, let's look at, uh, the recommendations, Council will have an opportunity to debate, uh, the amounts and the totals and that sort of thing as we move forward while we've got Mr. Klein here with the recommendations. Let's, uh, let's focus on that, and then we, this comes as a recommendation from his committee, and then we'll, we'll debate.
And just, just to, in case you, anyone did the math, but there is a total of $25,498 within the programming grants that's still available, which is the difference of those two amounts.
So why did they withhold that? Was that to go into future years or what?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. Essentially, they decided instead of awarding the other applicants to roll over that money into the next year.
Mr. Klein, remind me from previous, I should know, but I don't off the top of my head, do we have a balance that we've carried forward?
We, the only balance we carried forward was due to interest, uh, on the account, so it's very minimal. Uh, last year, we, the entire recommended amount was what was given, or the amount available for grant was what was given, and you, you do have two years to spend that amount.
Mr. Klein, how much did we fund, if any, did we fund the Christmas parade last year?
It, it looks like $3,000 was awarded.
That's total.
Tot, correct.
How much did we fund the Philharmonic last year?
$12,000.
What about the Chamber?
Yeah, we took some.
The Chamber, Chamber was $26,000 for, for programming, and then advertising, advertising was $32,500 last year.
So they bumped that pretty good.
Mr. Klein, what is, what is SC Charities Incorporated?
That's my next question.
Yeah, that was going to be my question.
They do BMW for sure.
Correct.
But I'm not familiar with Greer Street Fest and Shop Local Week.
I don't know too much about the organization.
I know that the BMW, the, uh, Pro Classic, I mean, you know, they do bring in a lot of people from out of town, out of state.
If I'm not mistaken...
That is a big event.
If I'm not mistaken, um, if you'll go back to the, the grant recommendations, SC Charities, um, I think what they're intending to do is, um, and I don't want to say in lieu of, and if I'm way off, I would love it if someone corrected me, but if memory serves, the Greer Street Fest and Shop Local Week is the week preceding the BMW Pro-Am, and that is an intentional effort to support local businesses, um, in advance of BMW's, um, charitable Pro-Am. So this is why it's new this year, because this... it's new this year, because this is a new initiative from the charities, if I'm not mistaken. Okay.
But it is with the, the golf tournament folks.
Correct.
Yeah, I think I've noticed some of their marketing on Facebook lately, talking about this Greer Week. So they're already pushing it regardless of, I guess, those fundings. That's good.
Others, questions of Mr. Klein?
I got one question on the, the amounts.
Yes, sir.
Of, I think it was 100 and whatever the total was this year. I noticed it went down from last year to this year. I didn't check any years prior. Is there any, in my head, I would think as much that's going on in Greer, it would continue to kind of increase, but it's kind of staying stagnant for these past two years. Any input?
Yes, sir. You are correct. It did, it did decrease last year, but it, last year's available to grant was 159,000. So it was a minor decrease of $3,000. On the programming side, there actually was an increase of about $4,000. So it is staying, it, all things considered, it is staying stagnant. But I would agree with you in that we are growing and you would expect, you would expect to have seen a, you know, slight bump in that from last year to this year. But going to 2023, to last year, there was actually an increase in about $40,000 in that amount. So this year, I think there was such a large bump that year, whereas compared to this year, it just seems very, very minimal.
Well, I think that's directly tied to accommodations. I think we can figure out why the bump.
Others of Mr. Klein?
Well, I, I think somehow or other, we need to work out to give to these that got zero.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if it's like the South Carolina charities for the Greer Street and the Pro-Am, even if you divided, they're 20, you know, 10, 10. I don't know how others feel about it, but then somehow whether you take some from the big donations like for the Chamber and, which has two, two big, excuse me, they basically got 100, 100,000, basically? Yeah, right up. So even if some of that was taken and distributed to the others, now somebody may have to fill with me to work it out. But I, when I would look at it, I would say give Greer relief their four and Foothills Harmonica, Harmonica, excuse me, not Harmonica, but Philharmonic, excuse me. Get that word right. I would say go ahead, you know, and either give them their 12 or 10 at least.
Well, if we're, if we're at the point of offering amendments, I'll offer one.
Let's, 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 let's do this. Mr. Klein, any, any other questions of Mr. Klein? Mr. Klein, if you'll stay close by, we'll, we may have questions as we get a little bit deeper into this.
Absolutely.
I, I suspect that there are going to be recommendations that, that will take place in regards to some changes. Those would need to be considered individually. So I suspect rather than doing these one off or one at a time, because we've got to work within the totals that we've got, as well as the excess funds, if we want to dip into those, to create a budget. So what we're going to do is start with the programming piece of this. We will, we will take these, take recommendations and work within, within that budget or with the other funds. And we will vote individually on a, on the programming grants as somebody is willing to make a motion in regards to that whole programming piece there. So.
We already have a motion on the floor, right?
We, we do. So it will have to be by amendment, yes.
I got, I got one other question.
Yes, sir.
The monies that we're allocating will be spent when?
They have to be spent within, within two years?
26.
They, they will be spending, the, the idea is to have it spent within the FY '26 budget. We will award it in FY '26, yes.
One other, just a side question. What happened to the Renaissance Fair?
So the Renaissance Fair moved to Spartanburg, is my understanding.
Ah, so we built them up and then they deserted them.
So the, you are correct.
Did they spend their money?
That's, that's part of the reason I think we're seeing such a large difference in what's still available this year, because I believe last year they requested $50,000. So that's why you do see that 25,000 left over here.
Now, do we know why they, the true reason why they left is maybe?
I, I, my understanding is they needed larger space as the event was getting bigger and growing.
Counsel, at this point then, we just need to work our way through, through this. If we can't, if we can't do it as a singular budget, we'll, we'll go to individual, we'll, we'll go to individual recommendations. Again, I think we'll find that hard since we won't have a way to monitor where we are within that budget. So I would suspect this may be a time for us to have some debate as to proposals from council as to what you might be willing to offer. And then we will, we will go from there.
Well, I'll, I'll make an amendment that we, to the, the motion that's on the floor, that we fully fund the Greer Christmas Parade and we fully fund the Foothills Philharmonic. And that that be, and then we would reduce the, let's see, that would be 16,000, correct?
That'd be 16,000 and it would still leave you with $9,498.
Okay. And then take that, that 16,000 from the Chamber. That would be my amendment proposed.
What would you have in mind for the Chamber in the advertising piece with that in mind?
I, I, this is for the programming, correct? That's what we were talking about. So that my amendment would be for the programming portion of it.
What was the total last year for Chamber?
Between both?
Yes, sir.
The 26 and 32, Mr. Klein?
Yes, sir. 32, yes, sir. 32 and 26.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of bumping that to almost 100,000.
So your recommend, your, your, your proposed amendment, Mr. Arrowood, is fund the Christmas Parade at the full 4,000.
Yes.
Foothills Philharmonic at the full 12,000.
Yes.
Reduce the Chamber Greer Arts and Eats Festival by 16,000. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, Jay, I will offer this. And for information, I was thinking reducing the Chamber by 10,000, fully fund the Christmas Parade and the Philharmonic. But the 25 that we have as a balance, make that up as the difference. So instead of 16,000 from the Chamber, and that's we can only take 10,000 and then make the difference up in the fund balance that we have left of the 25. And so then everybody's fully funded. But I'll offer, I'll, that was just for information.
I got you. I'd, I'd simply say, I, I understand and fully respect that we all have various levels of, you know, appreciation for that event. I would say it puts a lot of people in our businesses downtown and brings a lot of people, I, I'd say from the events on here that are specific, that are specific events that happen in Greer, it is the event that I would argue puts the most people in our downtown from outside that 50 mile radius.
Which event is that?
The Arts and Eats.
Really?
Arts and, absolutely.
But the, and, and I understand that. And, and this is probably going to bring me a lot of flack, but we spend a load of money on downtown businesses. And I don't know, but I would assume that if you just look at business license, that if you define our downtown and the business license fees received are not, I don't know if they're 20% of total business license fees versus all the other businesses throughout Greer. That, that's just information. But we do put a lot of, we have invested a lot in our downtown, in the direct recipients of that biz, those, are those businesses, not necessarily, you know, somebody out on the highway or, you know, elsewhere in the city. But.
To, to Mr. Arrowood's point, he has made an amendment. If we're going to have further discussion, we probably need a second.
I'll second.
Exactly what was that amendment?
It was.
The amendment is to fully fund the Greer Christmas Parade and the Philharmonic's request for $12,000 and that that $16,000 be distributed from the 50,000 allocated to Greer Arts and Eats Festival.
On the programming side.
On the, for, this is, this is the programming grants, yes.
Yes.
Well, I would like to see that the Pro-Am, because they, you know, do quite a bit. We even have, you know, functions that go on out there at the time. I would like to see them get something. And, and like I said, whether it's to take, to split their South Carolina charities between them or take some away from the bigger portions, which of course, I'm sorry, is the Chamber, with, you know, basically 100, 100,000.
Mayor, could you repeat that again, what, what we're doing?
Jay's amendment is that we fully fund the Greer Christmas Parade at $4,000. That we fully fund the Foothills Philharmonic season at $12,000. That $16,000 would then be deducted from the $50,000 on the light item identified as Greer Arts and the Eats Festival.
Understanding we're only talking about the programming and not.
This is only the programming grants at this point in time.
So that would still leave the balance that we would intend to carry forward of 26,000 or $25,000 in change?
This does not touch the balance that we, that we have. And it doesn't take into consider, I, I, I don't, excuse me. There are other items that are there that we could, that we could also move money around from. But that is the, that is the amendment that we have on the floor right now. And a second on.
Well, I'll just say I'm fully in favor of doing, you know, what you're saying on the Christmas Parade and on the Foothills Philharmonic. And I think it's pretty clear by now, I, I do believe in Arts and Eats and believe it has some room to run and grow and continue to be, you know, a marquee event for our community, unique in its offerings. But I mean, I, I get the arguments being made. I do understand the arguments being made.
I, I, I do to some point, I'm not exactly clear on the South Carolina charities for the Greer Street Fest and Local, Shop Local Week. Certainly I would support some effort in that regard. Was this, was this something we funded last year, Mr. Klein?
No, sir. This is a new program.
Okay.
Can you say one more time?
We funded BMW charity, I'm sorry.
Can you share one more time exactly what it is and what?
For the South Carolina charities for the Greer Street Fest?
Yes, please.
It's ultimately supporting, gathering and supporting local business in the downtown area, in a nutshell.
You know who makes up the South Carolina charities?
I do not.
Is there an event that they're doing? Is there?
There, there, this event specifically is after the BMW, the BMW event.
In conjunction with the Pro-Am.
Correct.
It is in the week leading up to the program. And they will have a function of some sorts, a, an event in our downtown.
So they are planning a.
They will physically be there. This isn't just a marketing campaign to support local businesses.
They stated they expected an attendance of 50,000 people with 15,000 of them being tourists.
For? For the whole upstate?
For the Greer Street Fest and Shop Local Week.
50, 50,000?
50,000 is the amount they listed on their application.
For Greer?
For South Carolina charities and Greer Street Fest.
Is this, is this not done in coordination with the city and the Chamber either or? I mean, who knows anything about it? Do they, do they even know what they're going to do? For an application for money?
But this is the same entity that does the Pro-Am, though.
That's my understanding, yes.
So if it's the same thing, why don't we have their money? I mean, you know?
I'm wondering.
Well, we've, we've got an amendment and a second on the floor. We're going to have to, we're going to have, we're going to have to vote on that before we go any further. If we want to move money from that event to, to another event on, on, on the agenda here to offset some of the, the loss of funds, or we want to just put that money back in the reserve, that, that would need to be another amendment considered separately.
But to be clear, everything is fully funded currently, and we've reduced Greer Chamber from 50,000.
Under Mr. Arrowood's amendment, everything is, is fully funded. The $25,000 remains in fund balance and Greer Chamber is reduced to 34,000.
And Mr. Mayor, we do have a motion and a second on Mr. Arrowood's amendment.
Correct. All right. Further, further discussion or questions in regards to Mr. Arrowood's amendment?
I don't have any more, but it just dawned on me, this South Carolina charities, because last year we took the, I don't know if the committee did not fund or if we took the funding away from BMW Charity Pro-Am. I am wondering if this is a backdoor way in to get more money, get, get some of that money.
Mr. When I, while I can't speak with a depth of knowledge of this, I don't think this is. I think this is a brand new program that they are, they're, a brand new initiative that they're launching that is not a, another opportunity to get money from the aid tax. Now, I could be wrong, but I don't think that's the case. I think this is intentionally something different.
Well, they, their purpose is to support the BMW tournament and to proceed to raise awareness and provide funding to various South Carolina charities. They have current assets of $4 million.
Well, while we have an amendment and a second on the floor, in this discussion, there is the opportunity, if, if it passes, it passes and, and that's done, to consider another one where we would adjust that South Carolina charities and either restore some of the money that would be lost to the Arts and Eats Festival and/or to some other line item or to the reserve fund. But we've got a motion and a second on the floor. We need to clear that. Any further discussion in that regard?
And this one is for Greer Relief and.
This is fully funding the Christmas Parade and the Philharmonic.
Orchestra, yeah.
And that money would then be taken from the Greer Arts and Eats Festival. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
No.
Ms. Alper?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
No.
All right, it passes. Let's move then to. Let's move then to advertising grants. The only item not funded and is not funded at all is South Carolina charities. The BMW Pro-Am with a request for thirty thousand dollars comes with a recommendation. This is part of the proposal that is brought by the committee. Floor is open for discussion.
Okay, so this one's advertising grants, and the other is separated programming grants. Are those two separate? You can't take from one and give to the other, or?
That's correct.
This one's only to be used for advertising. There is no motion on the floor, correct?
Not at this point.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendations as recommended.
Second.
Okay, so we've got a motion, we've got a motion to take the advertising grants in their entirety, is the motion correct?
Correct.
And we have a second?
Yes.
Floor is open for discussion in that regard.
From my understanding is, the Chamber of Commerce is bound to have to spend that forty-nine thousand just for that event in advertising.
That's correct.
That's a whole bunch of advertising right there.
What I, from knowing what I, I know about what they do and what they would like to do to build the, the event, I promise you, they will tell Greer's story far and wide in, through a multiple of different avenues in doing that.
For fifty grand, they ought to be able to push it far.
Hundred percent, absolutely.
They ought to be able to pay everybody's way there.
And there's been a lot of talk, and I, I guess we just don't have a lot of definition on this, but especially with the South Carolina charities, and I know in, in this budget here, the, the committee has said zero, but there's been times where it's advertising and promoting downtown. We want to promote all of Greer, right? So, this is not focused on, these dollars aren't to be focused on down, just on downtown. It's to be focused everywhere, so, you know, if, if the Chamber is going to spend fifty grand, to advertise, I hope that it will be advertisement for the entire city, from industries all the way down to your mom and pop.
Sure, and it, to be clear, it's going to be advertising come to this event, come to Greer for this event. You know, there are other, there are other things on here that aren't downtown specific, right? And so, yes, to your point, it hap, this event happens to be in downtown, so I guess you can make the argument it's, you know, advertising downtown in a way, but yes.
Well, and, and I think most, my mind's rolling here about the, the South Carolina charities, that, that, we just don't know a whole heck of a lot about it, and then they've got assets of four, four million?
That's what it says.
And that's, I think the Pro-Am's a good thing for our area, and I think we benefit from the Pro-Am, but to your point, it's all over the upstate.
No, I agree, and, and I was, I, I agree with zero for that, one hundred percent.
Well, I, I, I would disagree. I, I think we're being short-sighted, given the breadth of, and depth of that, of that event. While it may not be thirty thousand, I, I think we do benefit from that, that event.
Yeah, I think so, too. I think we benefit.
And, and I, I think it's being short-sighted. I'll, I'll just be honest, I can't support the motion as it is with not doing something about that. But we got a motion and a second on the floor. Continued discussion in that regard?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
No.
Ms. Albert?
No.
Mayor Danner?
No.
Fails on a three-three. I'll entertain another amendment.
So, if, if I may, remind me, we did not fund the BMW, the Pro-Am piece at all last year, correct?
Last year, not for advertising, for the programming side, we funded fifteen thousand.
So, I'll just say, part of the reason why I was okay with leaving it zero, I know they're separate items, but part of the reason why I was comfortable leaving this as zero is because we did step out and do something on the programming side for the Shop Local Again, several of us have expressed, you know, at least some level of questioning, not, not trepidation, but questioning, right? How much the measurables, how specific, you know, this is for Greer. I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, I, I know we benefit greatly from that, that event, being right in our back door. I guess what I, again, what I do know is, you know, the Arts and Eats Festival, it does happen directly within our footprint, it is a, it, the entire effort, the entire event is Greer-specific, so that's why I'm comfortable in funding that in it fully.
Would you like to make a motion to do that at the tune of fifteen thousand dollars, which would come from the reserve fund, which would leave ten thousand basically in that account?
We, we couldn't, the reserve fund was for the program.
Oh, for the programming.
Yes, sir.
There is no reserve.
There is no reserve fund for the advertising.
To, to give to one, you would have to.
There's no reserve, no, ma'am.
Oh, just for the programming.
I always leave the chamber.
Well, I'll take ten from, or nine, nine thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents.
Well, given the, the requests on, on the rest of it, it may be that.
There's not as much wiggle room.
There's not as much wiggle room. What is the, the advert, oh, it's, it's cultural arts, but advertisement of seasoned play?
I believe that's for the plays that they have throughout the year.
Oh, gotcha.
Andy, on the SE charities situation, based on some of the correspondence they have with the city, don't they do some type of advertising on the Golf Network? There's some, some component there, are you familiar?
They broadcast it, we, the city, actually, we've advertised as, in conjunction with the Pro-Am, our golf course, but that was separate than what they're asking for here.
Okay.
This is specifically, if I'm not mistaken, Chris, to advertise for the Pro-Am itself.
Okay. So, there, do you know of any specific advertising that they do specific to Greer? Because I spoke with them previously before, that they, they do some type of advertising on the Golf Network for Greer, Greenville, and some of the other municipalities, regardless of if they receive the accommodation tax money or not, but I, I can't say if it's true or not.
And I, go ahead. So, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So, this specific piece here is, would actually be for costs related to that commercial that you're referring to. That's why the committee felt a little hesitant about it due to the overall ask, because it would be going towards the expenses for this, putting on that commercial.
A more global commercial as opposed to specific to Greer, is that what you're saying, Chris?
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
So, it wouldn't necessarily fit the criteria.
It would fit the criteria, but not the, I think the, the criteria, it would fit the criteria, the committee, Chris, correct if I'm wrong, the committee saw that as not having a direct benefit to Greer, but more of a global benefit to the larger, greater BMW area, if you will, as opposed to having a direct impact to us. And so I think that was their, their reason for denial.
I, I tend to agree with that thinking personally. I know we're not, maybe not all of that opinion. I, I think we could make an argue, we, you can make an art, you know, go into your favorite event, Artist Sphere, I, I could, you could say that we benefit from an event like that happening in Greenville. There's probably, there could easily be people who come to a Greer restaurant, or come through downtown Greer, stay in one of our hotels as part of that, right? That's, I would much rather err toward leaning to Greer-specific organizations and Greer-specific events when, when at all possible.
Since, since the motion failed, I believe anybody now can bring another motion on this, given the additional information and my assumption in my vote the first time, that we, we had funds to be used to help offset this, it may be appropriate to reconsider the motion that failed.
I was about to say, if, if I may, I'd like to offer the same motion to approve the recommendations as recommended.
Do we have a second?
This is for as is presented.
As presented.
Second.
Did you say?
I, there wasn't a second, so I, I gave a second.
Second. Okay, floor's, floor's open for discussion.
So, explain to me what we're voting on?
Same thing we just voted on.
Same thing we just voted on, as is.
After more discussion.
You're talking about the, the advertising?
Advertising piece, yes.
As is.
I mean, I will agree with Mayor Danner on the short-sightedness of some of this funding, especially with the South Carolina charities, but I know for the past couple of years, we funded the programming side, which is great. They've extended their role at Greer Golf, they do the juniors golf clinic during the tournament, where they bring the celebrities out here at Greer Golf, and they have the kids out there. I've been, I've attended that for the past two years. They're having it again, to my understanding, again, this year, and then in conjunction, they're adding the Greer Street, so that's, I think that's really good faith from them to figure out how to be more inclusive, especially with receiving these dollars.
And I agree. Again, my, the reason why I'm okay with the zero here is because we did the programming there, and I'm open to, you know, even looking more next year after this year.
Answer this, what is, I know what Pro-Am stands for, but the BMW charity, what does BN, what charities do, do they support?
I think the list is different every year, Mr. Mayor, Mayor, Mr. Klein, you may know, but there's, if, when you go to the Pro-Am each year, there's a, as you're walking up to the eighteenth pole, there's a list of all the different charities, and there's, there's great, yeah, great organizations that are on there, worthy organizations that are on there.
Have a motion, have a motion and a second. Yes, sir.
I'd like to call a question, if I could.
Okay. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
No.
Ms. Albert?
No.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Let me ask one follow-up question, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Andy, do we require any kind of itemized receipts, if you will, of how this money ultimately is spent?
Yes, sir, and I think that's part of the application process, Chris can speak to.
That is part of the application process, and we look at that year over year to make sure and to have, if they don't follow these rules or guidelines, that goes into determining if they will be awarded further.
Thank you.
Counsel, with that vote, we have no items in executive session. Stand adjourned.